Earlier the board met in closed session and now the board will certify that the closed session is conducted in accordance with Code of Virginia and amended section two, not two, three, seven, one, two, motion to certify closed session.
Second.
Ms. Board.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Next up we have a moment of silence for a member of the Pulaski Public Schools family that we lost recently. Pulaski Public Schools and the Pulaski School Board would like to take a moment of silence for our family member who has passed away on Friday, May third, two thousand and twenty-four. She drove the school bus for Pulaski Public Schools for forty-four and a half years, working in the presidency. She was a bus driver for Riverland Elementary and the Pulaski County High School during that time she drove bus number seven and later in the years she drove bus number twenty-two. We could take a moment of silence for her, Ms. Epstein. Thank you. Next up we have the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next up, recognition portion of the agenda. President of the Board, will you be down, down?
Yes, sir. And as, thank you, Mr. Chair, as board members are headed down to the front, I ask Ms. Suma to, or doctors, excuse me, doctors? So we had a wonderful time at our National History Day and we have great recognitions for that program. Pulaski County Public Schools and the Pulaski County School Board are honored to recognize the following students for their achievement in National History Day. This school year, more than eight thousand students participated in History Day across the Commonwealth of Virginia. Approximately four hundred and fifty of those students were roughly five percent advanced to the state level competition. Fifteen students from Pulaski County were among that five percent, demonstrating their historical prowess at the Virginia History Day competition held on April twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, hosted by the Virginia Museum of History and Culture in Richmond. Within this group of talented participants, five students from Pulaski County Public Schools received recognition for their exceptional work. Izzy Osborne and Riley Dean, eighth grade students at Pulaski County Middle School, received the McCarver Memorial Prize for their junior group exhibit, and I'll probably litter this, but Kristallikin. Carter Gill, Payton McKennie, and Roland Thompson, six graders from Pulaski County Middle School, received a Naval Order of the United States Award in Naval History for their junior group exhibit titled USS Monitor, How a Cheesebox on a Raft Revolutionized Naval War Fair. They also placed first in the junior group exhibit division. As a result, they have earned the opportunity to compete at National History Day, which takes place from June ninth to thirteenth at the University of Maryland. Congratulations to these students. Additionally, Asher Vaughn, Pulaski Public Schools gifted resource teacher, was recognized with the Britain Best Housing Teaching Excellence Award for his remarkable contribution to history education. If I was to say this, none of this would have taken place without Dr. Suma and her leadership. Employee of the Month. Pulaski County Public Schools and Pulaski County School Board are honored to recognize the following employees for their dedication and contribution to our school system and if they would come down with the board members, that would be great. These employees, these have been the previous employees of the month this school year. From Chrysler Elementary School, Lori Ratcliffe, school nurse. From Dublin Elementary School, Crystal May, bookkeeper. From Pulaski Elementary School, Ashlyn Akers. From Riverlon Elementary School, Penny Clark, cafeteria manager. From Snowville Elementary School, Jamie Questberry, repair professional. From Pulaski County Middle School, Karen Brown, bookkeeper. From Pulaski County High School, Carmen Price, office assistant. And from Pulaski High School CTE, Sarah Lovett, preschool perfect repair professional. So with their recognition as Employee of the Month, they are qualified to be selected one of them as Employee of the Year. Pulaski County Public Schools is designated by the Team Committee for Choosing the Employee of the Year. The Employee of the Year for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty school year is Ashlyn Akers. Teacher of the Month. Pulaski County Public Schools and the Pulaski County School Board are honored to recognize the following teachers for their outstanding contribution to the academic and personal growth of our students. From Chrysler Elementary School, Jennifer Rafferty. From Dublin Elementary School, Amanda Kendrick. From Pulaski Elementary School, Sherry Burris. From Riverlon Elementary School, Meredith Arron. From Snowville Elementary School, Steve Shelton. From Pulaski County Middle School, Charles Shelton. From Pulaski County High School, Carrie Peterson. And from Pulaski High School CTE, Becky Roseberry. And just as our Employee of the Month, these folks too, who are selected Teacher of the Month, also qualified to be selected one of them as an Elementary Teacher of the Year and Secondary Teacher of the Year. First, our Elementary Teacher of the Year for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year is Jennifer Rafferty. And our Secondary Teacher of the Year for the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four school year is Charles Shelton. Our Bus Driver of the Year. Pulaski County Public Schools and Pulaski County School Board, please to honor Mary Nester as the School Bus Driver of the Year. Mary, or Sissy. Mary, or Sissy, has been driving a school bus for Pulaski County Public Schools for over thirty-three years. She has also served the division as one of our in-house CDL trainers since two thousand and seven and has trained countless wonderful drivers for our division. Mary is very safety oriented and has a great spirit and dedication for the students of Pulaski County. This is obvious by looking at her daily schedule, which typically begins with a morning bus route, then continues to a midday field trip, after that on her evening route, and then finally she ends her day with an activity run to provide her student athletes transportation homes for practice that otherwise would not be able to participate. When she is not transporting students, she can be found helping with some of our events for the community such as Stuff the Bus, to help provide Thanksgiving meals for our families, and Pack the Bus, which provides school supplies for our students in the division. She is truly one of those individual that makes Pulaski County a special place to work and live. I can't think of a more deserving person to receive this award. Cyber Security, Cyber Security Excellent Award. Pulaski County Public Schools and Pulaski County School Board, please to honor Jeremiah Simkins, Network Administrator, as a Cyber Defense Employee of the Year. Jeremiah was and continues to be the key in the cyber attack recovery process. Some of the following quotes were made by his colleagues. Jeremiah is always friendly and helpful when I reach out to him. He usually knows the answers to whatever I need help with, but if he doesn't, he checks on it and gets back to me. During a very stressful time for our county, he worked diligently to get issues resolved as quickly as possible. Jeremiah is always willing to help solve technology issues. He is such a pleasant person to work with, even when the situation is frustrating. His dedication is truly appreciated. Jeremiah is amazing. He can find a solution to almost any IT issue, and he has the coolest T-shirts. Jeremiah is always so helpful and easy to deal with when you need something, and that is greatly appreciated. He does a lot of behind-the-scenes work that never really gets noticed, but it's essential to the operation of the school system. I also know that Jeremiah played a vital role in the recovery process after a cyber attack. Our school system is lucky to have him. Jeremiah is always pleasant and helpful when handling technology issues, in person and or in the home. Jeremiah worked relentlessly during the recovery process and although we worked many hours, he remained positive and continued to assist with other technology issues as needed. Jeremiah always goes above and beyond and absolutely deserves this recognition. Jeremiah is so kind. He's always willing to help with a smile on his face and a great attitude without making anyone feel inadequate. His dedication went above and beyond when we were having cyber attacks. He worked countless hours, long and hard, for weeks. He never showed any defeat, even if he may have felt it. He preserved determination and kindness to it all. He is definitely an asset to our technology department and to anyone who has the opportunity to work with him. Jeremiah's worked tirelessly, without complaint, to help me learn technology. I can't express how much I appreciate and admire his work ethic. Jeremiah is kind and patient and very helpful. During cyber attack, when he discovered tons of things he had to do, he was so patient while teaching us. For those of us that didn't want, we did not know what we were doing, how to help. He has a great personality and is super to work with. Jeremiah's work skills with cyber attacks are exemplary, but his day-to-day work to keep our network running, his willingness to always help with calm, clear instructions, and his overarching skills is a blessing to the Pulaski County Public Schools system. Jeremiah always has a solution to your problem. He's very quick to respond and he has always taught me things that help solve problems on my own. His personality is calm and pleasant, and a bit to the point at times. He's a wonderful student and I'm proud of him. He does a lot for our schools. Jeremiah has gone above and beyond anyone's expectations for a failure. In support of guidance, the recent cyber attacks was limitless. He worked all hours, even keeping a blanket there if he had to stay overnight. As we would face systems after system failure, he maintained calm demeanor. His knowledge of not only the hardware, but the software connections was a large reason the school system did not lose any instructional days. Jeremiah is basically on call twenty-four seven, not that he has been told to, but because he wants to help make sure all is well. Many a time I've received a text or email about something that has happened that he is taking care of on the weekends or way after work should end. Once he didn't leave the office until three A.M. due to power school update issues, we are so fortunate to have in the IT family a hardworking and caring brother like Jeremiah. I have to, I have to let you follow this too, so, and this is for the entire IT department that really helped with that cyber attack that we had, Dr. Paul. So Ms. Crawford and I received an email from the National Superintendent's forum, and they have asked me to come present down there because of the way we handled our cyber attack. That was one of the best things that has happened in the country as far as that goes with schools, so thank you for that.
Mr. Chair, I think we'll move to our recognitions for the. Lot of, lot of great employees we have.
Yes, sir.
That brings us to our recognition of the first public comment section, we propose to wish to address the board regarding items on the current school board agenda. I am presenting Dr. Simkins, who may refer to the superintendent of research. Who may report back to the school board at a subsequent meeting towards public education. Would you wish to speak about individual employee or performance, please present comments or statements to the superintendent. Such matters will not be discussed at the board's brief limit. All your comments to three minutes. This section will only last three minutes. Do we have any speakers? Seeing that, another comment section has been removed. Ready? Before the board meeting, we refer to the minutes for the April eighth budgetary session, the April nineteenth, the regular meeting, the April twenty-ninth budgetary session. We are looking for a motion to approve the minutes as presented with previous meetings, the motions.
Mr. Chair, I don't think that question.
Second. Ms. Board.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Before the meeting, the board was also prepared to the current times agenda, and looking for a motion to approve the current agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Board.
Ms. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
Next up is the consent agenda, but we have a small change to the consent agenda, which is bringing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we just have one change of a candidate that you chose, who accepted originally and then chose not to accept, so rescinded her acceptance, and there will be an honorable letter to put that as well.
Any questions, comments from the board? You're going, could I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? That's presented.
I make a motion we approve the consent.
I make a motion we approve the consenting agenda, agenda of personnel change. That Mr. Brown.
Second.
I'll second that.
Mrs. Ford.
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes.
That brings us to our instructional focus. Mr. Brown.
We're so excited to have Mr. Whitaker, and I'm not sure who else is presenting with him, but he has, we have seen the power of these people to share with you all tonight, and it's phenomenal. This one first. Mr. Whitaker?
Yes.
All right, well, thank y'all for inviting us up here to introduce ourselves. We are IT Department. We don't really talk a whole lot. We kind of stay behind the scenes and like it that way. We're going to run through a few things real quick. I'm Lincoln. I'm the director. Our administrative assistant is Ms. Judy Farrell. She's somewhere back there. Then run through a couple of other folks. You all know Jeremiah.
Has he done anything before?
Ray Crawford is our junior network admin. He cannot be here tonight. Our techs, our senior tech is Paul Manning. Alex Canose, Caitlin Patterson, and Melody Rippey. Our student information system folks are Debbie Hampton, Jennifer Harris, and Kristy Legg. And our ITR teams, we're going to have some shuffling of them. Kathy Newbill.
Right.
Price.
Shelley Burris. Melissa Poole has been an ITR officer for years and years now, but she is taking a change of course with the county. She's still going to be with us, but she will not be serving this ITR team. Amanda Marshall is also transferring. She's once again in the state of the county, but she's got a new position. She's accepted. Mr. Dan Hood, is anybody there?
Yes, sir.
Going to be taking over for Amanda. And Ms. Chelsea Strance is going to be taking over for Melissa. So, I'd welcome them. Also, we have our IT parent, Ms. Reese Dowd. We're just hiding back there. It sounds wrong for us. So, yeah, I think everybody did. Real quick on who we are and what we do. You know, I'm the director, so I kind of oversee all the parts of the department. And the big parts that we have is our student information system based on power. But that is all of our data. We, we make sure that it is accurate and effective for decision-making throughout our county. And also, all those data reports that you all see, that's all Debbie's work that's going to be. Also, she is the person who takes care of all the state reporting. Say, she nags, and nags, and nags, and gets it done, so, it works well. Our network administrators, when things just work around here, that's... I mean, I can review everything that's on there, but if it works, that's Jeremiah and Gray to make it happen. Our techs are the trogans, are the guys who fix. They step up and fix all kinds of things and troubleshoot. Our ITR teams, they're truly our bridge, because, you know, the technology, we've got everything going over here, but we have to get it over to instruction. And our ITR teams are the ones who walk across the bridge, get it to the teachers, get it to students, and make it happen. As far as our accomplishments, rebuilding after the cyber attack, that was a big deal for us. We're very proud of the schools. They will remain open the entire time. I don't know if you all are aware or not, but our team had to touch every single device in this county. So, it's, it's a lot of machines to lay hands on. And they kept a good attitude about it the whole time, even when it got pretty painful. We got good. Everybody was happy. We're, I'm going to say 95% recovered at this point. There's still one little thing out there that we're working on. As far as we're implementing Master Connect and Lexia, those were two big programs. We felt that we're successful this year. Master Connect replaced Performance Matters. And, you know, that is a standard-based testing software. We use that to deliver our benchmark tests. And our ITR teams continually build assessments in there for anyone in the county to use. And then we've got Lexia, and that's also, that's a phonics reprogram. Shelley Burris has done a tremendous job getting that up and going, and it's going to be expanded, I'd say, into the middle school for next year. We do keep enhancing the infrastructure and security. We're replacing all the switches at the high school. For those of you who are not familiar with those, those big boxes that beep periodically and drive futures crazy, those are our switches. Without those, the signal doesn't get out where we're in. And Jeremiah and Gray have been working on that pretty much constantly. Also, we've been upgrading communications and security. We've replaced the Riverline intercom system with a real nice one. We're also taking that to the high school, hopefully in the next couple of weeks. We're out of kickoff, oh, we get that going. Cyber Camp, that's something that we're very proud of in our department. It started in 2016. It's a grant that came from the governor. And we've been able to maintain that every single year, with the exception of the COVID years. So, we're able to offer something to the students of Kylaski County. We come in, whether it's robotics, cybersecurity, pixel, RDU name. We have them come in, and they work with those, that machinery while we're, while we have them in Cyber Camp. Instructional resources, the ITR teams are going to talk a lot more to you all about that when they come up here with some net. And then there's student information system. That's where we get the on-time submissions. Debbie and Jennifer are fantastic, making sure that those reports basically come in on time and every time. Move right ahead here. So, some challenges we had, of course, the cyber attack was a challenge, but like I said, we are recovering from that, and we're just about there. Budget is always a challenge, as I'm sure you all have been dealing with for the past several months now. Our big solution to that goes E-Rate. E-Rate is very, I forget, but if we do it right, it pays for 70% of the internet bill. It pays for a lot of these big-ticket items that we have, that we'd never be able to afford otherwise. And then, of course, maintaining one-to-one, you know, personally, I always believe that one-to-one is important to our students. In a lot of cases, when kids go in to apply for jobs or shown a computer in the corner, they even don't know how to operate it. I believe one-to-one helps with that kind of thing. Also, our techs really help maintain and keep that up. All right, future goals, the ITR teams are working on online PD course. We always try to offer PD, but we're going to try to run this one through Canvas. Shelley's going to talk about some of the PDs that they've made, and there's a lot of them. The more we can get that in there for teachers to do professional development on their own time, and we feel like that would be appreciated and something useful for the county. We've also got new programs, you know, we talked about Lexia. We talked about... Talked about Lexia. We talked about Master Connect. We're also going to be, Power School is going to have new things to, real soon. They're at a total upgrade. And also, we have WhoKnewIt's software that's going in there, which takes that down and makes it very profitable for people. One of the things I noticed right out of the gate with WhoKnewIt was it just got a hospital. It shows you where all our kids live, and, you know, all areas. It's going to help with a lot of things as far as just seeing data and seeing represented graphically, so it makes sense. And then, of course, we want to continue on our current tech programs. The big one there is Canvas. That's a learning management system, not only for Kylaski County, but for the Commonwealth. We want to keep that up and going. Also, just a replacement of any of our... Yeah, replacement of our wireless access points. That'll be a big project that's coming up for us this summer. All right, so, I'm going to step away, because this is the point now where the ITR teams, our two lead ITR teams, Kathy Grayville and Shelley Burris are going to step up and talk to you about what they do in that bridge from technology to instruction.
Hi, so, I am an asset going to talk about what instructional technology resource teacher is and what we do. That has actually changed since COVID. They actually redefined our roles, kind of because of COVID and the way technology has changed. Essentially, we are classroom support. However, now, it's not so much pushing into a classroom. It's more of a coach with technology, because mostly your teachers know how to do technology now. So, they need more assistance with programs and creating learning resources. At the high school, I've counted on as the in-house teachers being teachers. Even at the elementary and the middle school level, we're making resources. We're making remediation. We're helping save time and giving them the resource that they already know how to use. They just might not have the time to build that technology-enhanced piece in their classroom. And we also facilitate professional learning related to current technology. So, we are going to teach teachers how to use Lexia or Master Connect or Canvas when it comes out. Any of those new programs, we are given the training first. It's generally a train-to-trainer model. So, we then take what we have learned and teach them how to use it. Or if it's a program the teacher just asks about and goes, "I want to use this free program, but I can't figure it out. Can we figure it out?" We'll do that with them. We also are with the curriculum team. We work with them. And we help use data to design technology-based instructional strategies. So, if we're seeing a weakness somewhere, sometimes we will build mini lessons or technology that we go, "You know, this one might be better suited on technology," or we can do different digs for that. We also just help with technology planning and leadership. We can go, "Hey, this program is not working. It's not doing what it intended to do." Or they love this program. Can we implement this more? Or we're seeing it work really well, which is kind of what happened with Lexia at work really well at the elementary school level. And so, they're pushing it in the middle school. Digital resource management, that's just the general idea. We help organize everything, make sure Google guides are available, things like that. And then we do provide technology support. If the texts aren't available, you can definitely fix some of the notebooks for meeting boards, things like that. This is just a, kind of a image that Virginia has released of what instructional technology teachers should be doing or how we should be planning with teachers. Well, we're supposed to be data-driven, which we tend to look at Master Connect for our data. That's a place where it's going to data. But we can also just data collect when talking to teachers or going to Lexia. And that data helps us be a connected learner with our teachers. We help the teachers connect to their students, and it helps us connect to them and see where there might be weaknesses or even strengths and going, "Hey, this teacher is really good at X, Y, Z. Maybe you should talk to them." So, we can help connect learners together. A collaborative piece, just the same thing, where we're working together with everybody and learning designers. So, we do help design some of our new components going into the classroom anymore. And then professional development is one of our big ones. We always try and drive that professional development through tutorials or pushing into the PLCs or putting it on Canvas, high school, like some of their tutorials and stuff in Canvas, instead of having the one-on-one, to give them a little bit more freedom of time. We wanted to go ahead and provide some examples. Do we start in the beginning? I'm going to start with the secondary examples, different things that we've worked on. I maintain a adaptive PLC course at the high school. There it goes. So, we maintain a calendar in here, but then we also provide a whole bunch of important links or documents, just an easy place for teachers to gather information. It's also where we install ways to collect our PLC meetings minutes for their SMART holes or things like that. I can put it in there as an assignment for the teachers. It maintains stores. It's all on Canvas. Things like that are built in there. The PD course that we have been talking about. So, I have had trouble offering after-school PD for technology, which is something that we used to do a lot of. I haven't been able to do it in the past two years, so I've been working along with the other ITR teams to build a robust technology PD in Canvas. It is set up so that they give directions, and then they will actually take an assessment that tells them if they're a beginner, novice user, or if they're an expert user. And if they're an expert user, we're going to be pushing them into different levels of curriculum and learning experiences with that. But we have approximately 30 modules, 30 modules in here, that if they work through the module, they get a PD point for it. With the encouragement, they have to do at least 10, and then they can do more than that. So, that, we're hoping to release that in August. If I get it done this semester, we have 20 of the modules done. I think I have about 10 more to build in here. But it gives them all of that information. I also, where I said teachers, grand teachers, information. We build technology-enhanced lessons. So, this one has information on it, and then it is a dry and drop assignment. So, students can come in here and work with teachers, things like that. I built a lesson plan template that was requested by admin. I also do a parent teacher registration that is electronic for the high school level. So, we can work with the admin, or we can work with teachers, whoever needs us.
So, I'm Shelley. So, I'm one of the ITR teams at the elementary level. So, all five of our schools, it's Melissa and I. And we had our two lead rollouts this year. It was Lexia and Master Connect. So, Lexia was held at Master Connect, and we had great success. And then this year, they decided, you know, we rolled it out in our core other schools. So, it's an adaptive literacy-based program for all of our kiddos. And we have our pre-K students, so our three-year-olds, up to our fifth graders, working in Lexia. They spend anywhere from 10 to 30 minutes a day in the program. It's personalized instruction. The feedback that the teachers get, the data is immediate. The teachers are notified if there needs to be some type of intervention, that the teacher needs to, you know, just get in, and that, you know, they've done this lesson a couple of times, the teachers need to intervene. The teachers are given lesson plans, I mean, right there. So, they can take that time, get the pulitzer over to a table, and intervene, and then, you know, get them right back on track. So, Lexia has been phenomenal at our elementary schools. And I, I mean, in the halls, this week, that's all teaching, teachers, I remember teachers just really saying, you know, you know, besides myself, I really think Lexia made a difference with some of these kids this year. Master Connect is our other big platform and... There it is. So, Master Connect is our digital assessment management program that we use in grades two through 12. So, all of our benchmark assessments through CIP, they are administered through there. There's a tracker. So, when teachers log in, this is what they see. So, if you can see that on your screen, I mean, teachers immediately, through these visuals, know, "Okay, where are my students that I need to get in and, you know, provide interventions for?" It's a test bank, so there's questions in there. There's tests already created that they can access if other teachers in our county have made them. Or any teacher across the city that's in our consortium, CIP. They can go in and pull questions from the bank and create their own. That's been wonderful. But, I mean, this has been really driving our instruction with some of these teachers. I mean, it's just data-based, and they're really loving Master Connect. At the elementary level, what Melissa and I did was after benchmark testing. The benchmark testing grades two through, well, even higher, at the elementary level, it's two through five. So, Melissa and I, we love data. I mean, we're just data lovers. So, I mean, we really sit down after we see our assessments, and we have gone and created these benchmark reviews. Gosh, I freaking love that. I mean, what does it do with it? All right. Let's go back. Let's try again. Right, there.
Technology.
They don't work out.
Right.
That's July.
That's right. We tested them all.
We did.
There it is. Okay, so, Melissa and I went in after every benchmark review, every quarter, and we went and analyzed the CIP benchmarks for them. We picked those ones. We went on that tracker. We looked, and we're like, "Okay, where are our yellows and our reds? Where can we get the biggest benchmark up?" And we made these reviews for the teachers. So, I mean, some of them, I think some of them were a hundred pages long, you know, slides long. But we went in and we pulled those SLOs. We put on there the questions that they missed. We put in there additional practice that the kids could use. We also created little mini lessons for all of the teachers, so that they could just, you know, go through this in the classroom and really, you know, show the student, work with the students to reinforce, you know, their skills that they're struggling with. That took us weeks, weeks. But that was our discussion that we did, and the teachers are loving that. I mean, the principals are, you know, stopping us in the hall and saying, "Hey, my teachers love it." The teachers are telling us that, and it was, Shelley saved us so much time. Oh, so... So, we did that for every single grade level, for grades two, three through five. So, that at the elementary level was really our focus, and what we kind of did at the elementary level. And I think maybe questions?
No, I mean, questions for us?
Just thank you for being one of the most hardest-working and innovative IT departments in the state. Next up, our international line, and NRD has a governor's school for arts and humanities.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, uh, excited to welcome President Brett, as he's so affectionately known and on the honorary campus, uh, in the NRD and also throughout the Commonwealth. Uh, just want to start off thanking him and Rapp University for all the partnerships that we have. Uh, you know, I could name, I guess I can name all of them. We have, you know, this potential program. He's been kind enough to allow us to look at having our new valley reset program on Rapp University campus. Uh, we're part of the Teacher Assistant, uh, Teacher Apprenticeship Grant Program with Rapp University, also P3 piloting with, with Rapp University too. And just today, believe it or not, I called down there to see if there was a possibility that we could use the Department Center of Correspondence. Yes, so unfortunately, that, that did not work out. We were able to discontinue our plan, but we really appreciate all the support that you provide us and look forward to what you share tonight.
Thank you so much, Superintendent. And, uh, for members, I don't believe I've met many before, but, uh, that's my fault because I only live twenty-one minutes that direction. So, nice to meet you all tonight. And, and I'm gonna talk you through the opportunities about developing a new governor's school. And just to you, where the framework for governor's schools in the states, there's two flavors. One of those are summer governor's schools. For example, Radford University hosts the Governor's School for the Arts and the Governor's School for Humanities on Radford's campus over the summer lines. There's a lot of those across the state. Fewer in number, there are academic year governor's schools, which students participate over the full course of their year. The, the one that you'd probably be familiar with right now, because QASC participates in it, is the STEM Governor's School, which is hosted at New River Community College. And, yeah, the students take some courses there, and they still take some courses from their high school. Well, I was approached by Dr. Graham, along with, um, some of his colleagues in the area, saying that there was a need for additional or more advanced humanities and arts courses over the course of the academic year. So would we be able to partner and fund some opportunity to, to create a governor's school or a lab school around this? And ultimately, I've been, I'm very fortunate in my background that I came through Florida Atlantic University most recently. And they have a very active lab school. And when I say active lab school, their elementary school is ranked second in the nation for public schools. Their middle school is ranked, I can't remember, I think it's thirteenth in the nation for all middle schools. And their high school is ranked in the top hundred for all public schools. That is their lab school that I came through. And their approach is very different. Most lab schools, sorry, most governor's schools, they're the academic year. Those courses that the students are taught are courses that are distinct from the school and distinct from the university. They're advanced learning, but you can think of it this way. The students are getting more math, more science, more courses, but it doesn't count for university credit. When FDU built its program, what it did is, starting with its ninth-grade students, they took half of their courses back into the university as university students, and then started with their tenth year, uh, as sophomores. All their courses from that point up over to the university. Now, that might sound a little different, and it is, but I wish me on how that transition works and why that is actually a very financially viable model to follow up. So the point that this school would work, the, the outcome goal is that when the students graduate from QASC High School, they would actually have thirty credits of university courses, all in a track. And I've got a handout for you all, just a, just a two-page handout that shows there's, um, six different tracks they could follow. Ultimately, those would be the arts or the humanities. So the students would be graduating having paid nothing themselves for thirty credits of university, uh, courses, which fully count towards a degree. In other words, they'd be skipping a year of university. And one of the advantages over a, a highly specialized school like this is the students find something that they are interested in, the arts or humanities, and that's where all their credits are. So it's not a blend of general education. A student that is interested in, in design and art are not gonna be taking math and history classes. They're gonna be taking design and art classes. So students that participate have a high likelihood of succeeding in these courses because their passion for biology is beginning. The way that this would work is the students would be selected and leave during their, their freshman year of high school. Their sophomore courses would be taught on Radford University's, uh, campus. This is just kind of morning classes. I think it's Monday, Wednesday, Friday, is what we ended up on. Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Fridays. And the courses, their sophomore year, would all be transition classes. They would, they would count from high school curriculum, but they wouldn't get university credit. All those courses are to get them up to speed. So starting in their junior year, they're able to take freshman-level classes at the university with university students and be successful in those. Same thing about as a transition year or acceleration year, okay? In their junior and senior years, each semester, they would take two university courses. It's likely in their junior year, they would take two courses, all two courses in the spring. And in their senior year, they would take three courses in the fall and three courses in the spring. Ten courses, which would give them thirty credits of gift. That would place them as a sophomore when they started in that, in, in the university setting. The point that this works financially, and the reason governor's schools, there was a report that came out over the summer, and all the governor's schools that are out there indicated they need more funding in the state. I get that. All, all education systems want more funding to do better than each other. Totally understand. But the reason that's expensive is those governor's schools are teaching additional courses. They're, they're not taking, uh, courses top of the high school or the university. Somebody has to teach brand-new courses, every course those students are taking, okay? For our governor's school, the way that this would work is we would have the sophomore-level classes, these transition courses, that would be distinct to these students. But starting in their junior year, they would actually be taking classes in open seats in our freshman-level courses. So we don't have to pay another faculty member to teach a course. We have seats available. When they move into their senior year, they would be taking sophomore and potentially a couple of junior-level classes in that track, using seats that are already available in this. So we don't have to hire additional faculty, right? It's already covered by our university structure. So the funding that's received all goes back into that sophomore year. Ultimately, this makes it a much more affordable model. The students themselves are getting university faculty for teaching their courses. And from the Florida Atlantic experience, I mean, general high school students performed at least as well as the university students in the courses. As you can imagine, these are motivated students, they're talented students. They want to succeed, they want to show they can succeed, and they definitely do. So that's, that is just an overview about what this would look like. Again, it's done as a partnership. Uh, we are in the process of setting up a, a, um, a planning board for this. And at least it's fine to understand that host chair, Kim, has, has currently volunteered, and the leader is Dr., wasn't it, Dr. Suma? She was around here, she is. Uh, has volunteered to be the parent representing Gilaskey County. The five counties that are there, each has a board member and a parent. There's the department, there's the superintendents, and also the teams. Uh, the College of Visual and Performing Arts, and the College of Humanities and Social Sciences on Radford's campus. And we are to be planning towards, uh, ideally, having a proposal together by about December, which we would, um, give to the state. There's a long process, uh, like any new program, there's a bureaucratic pathway that is deep in paperwork. I'm hoping that we'll be ready in about December for, for a launch, potentially the following fall. But if it takes another year for us to get it set up right, that's fine. We want to do it right, we want to make it successful. So students that join, it's not really they succeed, it's how we keep them excited about the pathway and the progression. And, and with that, Superintendent, that was just an overview, but I'm happy to answer any questions people might have.
Any questions coming?
I have some questions, and I'll probably repeat them once we get bored for this meeting. Um, you were kind of using lab school and governor's school in a changing league? Would you explain that to me?
I, I can. They're, they're potentially the same, but here, here's the difficulty, financial. Lab schools, the way that they're funding Virginia right now, you only get one-time funding. So if you get approved for a lab school, you can get money to potentially go building, okay? To, uh, have teachers to develop a curriculum, but there are no ongoing dollars. So if anything new that costs money in a lab school, nobody exactly knows where that money is gonna come from. So that is the structure in Virginia. Each state is different in how they do that. In Florida, you could actually set up your own district as a lab school, more like a charter school, and it has a different funding plan. So each state is different. So, so here, if approved as lab school, you get one-time funding. If approved as a governor's school, you get ongoing funding that complements the number of students that you have. Uh, the study that came out this summer indicated that the average support per pupil across all lab schools was twenty-seven hundred dollars per year. So that's a supplement provided by the state on an ongoing basis. So that's why they can be the same thing, they often have the same function, but lab school in Virginia, one-time funding, governor's school, ongoing funding. How you're funding is the, is the way to make this work.
Okay, um, next, thank you for that.
Well, sure.
Next question, um, you know, our high school students can choose standard diploma, against diploma pathway. I'm gonna assume any child that participates in this governor's school is on path to an advanced diploma. You said thirty credit hours they can achieve, um, through this governor's school?
Correct.
That would sort of meet or likely exceed the requirements of an advanced diploma in the arts and humanities?
And with that question, that's where there's gonna be five support candidates working on this one. I don't know that answer, it's, it's, do you have that?
If you, if, depending upon, of course, it has to be approved by the Department of Education too, and that would correlate with our programs that Gilaskey County High School as well. And then, uh, if approved, I would assume that that would, the credits would lead toward that. One of the things that we have with that is that would potentially, um, it could have a child be ready to graduate by their junior year. We don't want that, but they wouldn't be able to complete the program at Rapp University with the thirty credits. So that's kind of how we're, we're admitting that to.
All right, I was thinking to make sure that, that the credits required for math and science are what they need. Okay, last question.
Yeah, and I heard one of the things that the students have looked at on our campus is that five doing this, I think it was, uh, eighth to twelve on Monday, Wednesday, Friday. I think it's what we, what we looked at. For each of these six tracks, they have those courses available for students. Everything they would pay for their thirty credits is, is that they would be taking as juniors and seniors, those are available during that time period. The rest of the time, the students would be back on their, you know, in Gilaskey School, uh, high school. So, and no curricular things, from sports to band on campus to plays. They'd still be able to participate in those next point, and still feel what it's like to be a high school student, while at the same time feeling what it's like to be a university student. And, and so, you know, when it comes to, will they have enough credits? There's, yep, there should be elements on the back of the high school to ensure that they've got all the courses in the, to include that, consider.
Okay. Last question, she promised. Um, I understand how this in governor's school, NRCC works. They, they're in there, they're in classes together.
Yep.
Are the students are. This would be different in that our students would be sitting in classrooms with college students, correct?
Correct.
One time a starting, uh, they segue about tenth grade, and by junior year, they'd be fully immersed in a classroom with other college students?
Correct, so in tenth grade, they would just be as a group. They, they would be taking accelerated classes in different groups because the groups that are cool on the arts track are likely gonna be in different kind of accelerated or transitional classes that the students would work towards the humanities. They're gonna be on Radford's campus, but in classrooms that are dedicated to those students. Starting in their junior year, they will be commerce-first among college students on Radford University's campus in several different domains. And having gone through this, according to that, where it's a much bigger program, zero student issues in terms of, but there's a big document that outlines all the procedures around novice work to make sure that we have, you know, people trained, the right oversight, et cetera. But having seen this before, a much larger program, a much bigger, I'm gonna say more anonymous campus than, uh, Florida, I mean, no challenges at all for students in the classroom or university students creating challenges to high school students.
Okay, I wouldn't, I'm not terribly concerned about like physical safety or younger students. I've been trusting those who protect them, but, I mean, some of these classes, we could be getting into, uh, topics that might be, um, you know, family values, my question. Some of these for a fifteen or sixteen-year-old, would we be able to be purely transparent to the families of what they're being taught?
Absolutely. So this is where the materials that are part or whole university student, when they attend, they have lots of choice in what they're taking in or out. We want to make sure that the courses that are there, and I can't remember what was written on here, but we've talked about this, and we do want to make sure that, you know, when you get into areas like, um, let's just say theater, there's a lot of different flavors of theater out there, and with the participating in them, we want to make sure this aligns with all five of the school systems, which means it'll probably be a, uh, a very tight curriculum that the school boards are fully aware of and would be supportive of that. And it's, it's not gonna be a random set of faculty members that can be teaching all that. It's a group that knows that they have the high school students in their classes.
Any other questions coming? Thank you, Dr. Graham, for putting this fantastic parting to us.
Thank you. I'm so happy to partner with, uh, Dr. Graham, and not, not just you, I see, anything that we can do to help the school system around this, it's open all for us. So thank you for allowing us to stand and keep working together.
That's it, I'll see you later, Sandra, there am I. Sorry to keep you late, buddy.
Awesome, thank you.
Don't do it, uh, it's gonna get better.
Good evening, this is your program for, uh, I would like to first talk about how prom, after prom was. My first experience, I think it was great, both in work. I didn't expect to say a whole topic, but I did. Um, my favorite part was probably the taco chowder. It got me tired, but I missed out on it. But I didn't have it, it was a great atmosphere. I think taco part was probably, I really was just making it. And after prom was just a fun event. Well, my second point is, um, bullying. I've heard a lot of like stories about bullying, and, um, kids just getting bullied, like it's hurting their mental health, and they're talking about like suicide and stuff. So I'm like, I wonder if you have, um, a non-dissuaded report for bullying? Because I know like people who report bullying, bullying is worse because, because it just does. But do you have like a non-dissuaded report it, or is...
Uh, I think our middle school used to have like a non-dissuader or a bully box or something.
Bully box, you're correct.
Do we still have that?
No, we do not.
So is there a way that we can be, uh, so we have kids feel more safe in their school environment?
We can look at that, definitely, so a lot of it.
We do have, we do have that on our website. On the turn of the students, I'll list this place you go and report you may any time.
And we think that would be easier to find on the website.
And bring more awareness to it, because kids definitely get... Um, my third point is that I feel like we need to make, um, inclusion more impactful for like kids with, um, special needs or disabilities, for the type of sports teams. And I feel like they should have a chance to be a manager for basketball, baseball, football, whatever it is, because sometimes, because they feel left out if they're not included. And I just want them to have like equal opportunity to be there just as everyone else does. And then, I want to have two PCHS go-days a year, instead of like having a fall, well, I'm like summer. Not because like we get the whole day off, basically, but like that's what's making it sweet then. I feel like those kids will be happy with that, and they have an impact on what their school looks like. And then, if I hear about this again, I mean, we're going to say, but seniors have to stay the whole year? Is, is that...
Just cause you know, we say that.
Maybe you have two each early, and then a month time, I'm like, oh man, I get two each early. And now if you hear this, I have to stay the whole year?
Which is maybe more there am I.
But if, if it is like a thing, I know it's like a rumor right now, but if it is actually a thing, can we have like, um, because I know seniors get days counts, I have to, was there a way that you could work through the school to be like playing seniors get days, that you have to stay the whole year?
That's a, that's a poor question. That's a, that's a poor question.
I don't think it's a seniors get paid.
No, I don't think they have.
You have to tell us, it's like you're someone.
It's not saying we've already heard the twenty-four, twenty-five count, is it, correct? It's gonna prove, yes.
Well, it's worth a try. Well, I'd be like to record is that if you are free tomorrow, please stop by New York Church at six-thirty. We'll be, um, recognizing, congratulating seniors for graduating. There will be worship music and, uh, eating food on that outside. But if you're in a hurry with these, is, now, similarly, last time we actually go in hospital, which I waited. So if you are free tomorrow, and Wednesday evening, you're welcome to come, it starts at six-thirty.
Thank you for the invitation, I believe it will all be the time.
You'll see our faces more.
And Mr. Williams was a promising flight orders.
I've heard you doing it.
Okay.
Well, but anyways, thank you for, um, joining us, Gilas County, as a student representative. It's been an honor to serve in this position and have this incredible opportunity to impact our community. Um, I know it's about our last school meeting, but thank you for having me here, and it's been an honor working with y'all, and I can't wait till next year, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Next up, uh, the PCHS track jersey retirement.
While you're handling those, I just wanna say to Jeremiah that you handled yourself very well. I just do represent our school board here, so we appreciate everything you brought to us too. Thank you. And I want your haircut, by the way.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
This is Mr. Williams and Mr. Williams and Mr. David, Mr. Cox, Mr. Brothers, Mr. Ray. Uh, I gave you the pictures, I want you to know who the person I'm talking about was. When he started running, he was very small, he had the knees, and I'll say it later, he was five feet and eighty pounds, and served the meets, he wins, so anyway, but, uh, my name's David Wright. I coached runners for fifty-four years, especially at Gilas County and a few years at Bradford. My daughter was coaching there. I'm here to request that Richard Noel, here to give his credit. He was a good student, an outstanding person, a great friend, a flag runner, and a wonderful and humble person. He encouraged his mentor, his teammates. When he got there, he was better than all of them, and he was better than all of them for four years, but he was a good friend, uh, worked hard. He won, he was the best distance runner that I ever coached. He won twenty-five cross country races, he won eight indoor track races and indoor track NLS meets back then. He won thirty-eight outdoor track races. Back then, when he was a freshman, he could only run two events in a track meet. There was a spare that won almost as many as him, and he could do five events a meet, instead of just two. Now, at least six cross country races, Richard slowed down at the end when he easily had one to allow his teammates to win the race. So he couldn't win six more in two indoor track meets at least. He did do his best event, which is a mile and two mile, to, uh, let some of his teammates try to win those, and he did something else like the thousand at the eight minute. In the first cross country season at Gilas County High School, the team was last place in the district, seventh. Richard was in like sixth grade, seventh grade. Second season with Gilas County High School Cross Country, the team improved to fourth. When Richard got there, with his eighty pounds and his five feet five, uh, the team won, well, excuse me, Richard won his first race, then he won five more, so he won six that year. The team won five out of six that year within there, instead of zero and four. And then the team also placed second in the championship meet that year, and Richard was second place after all. The next three years, Richard was third, second, and first in that district meet. The team won seventeen of their eighteen regular season meets and placed second, first, and third in those district meets. So before he got there, they were last and fourth place, and after he got there, they were second. He was the, uh, first and only one of three Gilas County High School brothers to ever win the district cross country meet. He won twelve district championship races, that's out of possible twenty, so he did a mile and two mile, four seasons, so that was eight, and then outdoor, that'd be eight more, that'd be sixteen, and then four cross country races, so he won twelve of those, twenty possible. He won a district championship of twelve, so the regional meet he won three times, and the state meet he won two times, or placed two times in the state. He placed in the district twenty-seven times, and in the region, eight times. He was on state twice in the two mile. Uh, when I talked to some of my former runners about what they said, they said, make sure I told you all that they were in the triple A division back then with sports, now there's six divisions. Back then, there were three, they were the top divisions, which it's hard to tell you how hard it was to place there, but, uh, they were tough. So in indoor track, that second year, he was in the sixth, Gilas County had four points. In the state meet, they turned into double A division, right? They had enough to win the meet according to their time, so this, so that's again, I'm telling you. Richard was probably the most powerful player or runner on the team in eleven of the twelve seasons that he ran in cross country. Uh, not sure why they did the other time. In outdoor track, Richard and teammate Sammy Moore, who I don't have a picture of for you, were first and third in the district in the mile. At the junior, Richard, maybe Sager, which are the PC jackets that one of them had, the gold PC jackets, were, uh, first and second in the mile. At the senior, Mark Cox, who they're running side by side at the finish line, was first and second, first in the district in the mile. And also the picture, the kid's got his arm around, like Richard had his arm around, like Sicker, they were first and third in the two mile at that meet. Uh, later, and I talked to Dottie, and I said, Dottie, she said, Richard was really an important character, who would be a successful runner. And then later, Dottie went to, Dottie went to Bradford, Richard was at Marshall, and he transferred to Bradford. And again, was a matter of big help to Dottie, too. Uh, Noel's sophomore year, he didn't win the, he didn't win the mile, it wasn't a two mile, but he started growing from his five feet and eighty pounds, and he got bigger, and he got slower. He was already slow, but he could go slow a long distance, which made it fast. One more page. In the regional track meet, he won the mile and the two miles. He was fourth in the state with a time of nine-seventeen, back again to the double, triple A. His nine-seventeen point eight time, he came in fourth. He was, he was third place the whole race, and almost got second, and right at the finish line, the guy was fourth, passed him. And the other guy, getting second, Richard ended up fourth. His nine-seventeen time would have been first, his freshman sophomore junior year at that meet, and the next team here, then he graduated, so anyway. Richard's first time running the mile was four-thirty point eight. That was the top five time for fourteen-year-olds at that time. And this is what's still amazing, and in his PE class that same year, you ran a fifty-yard dash in seven point eight seconds. Now, you figure seven point eight seconds for a mile, that's slower than you ran a mile, and that's four-thirty-four, and you ran four-thirty. So when he got going, he wasn't fast, but he could keep up that same fifty-yard dash speed for a mile, which is impossible, but somehow he did it, so. Uh, running practices, just to tell you how tough it was, they ran at six AM in the morning, and then after school, five days a week, Monday and Friday mornings, and usually around eleven miles. Monday afternoon, Friday afternoon, they usually run eleven miles. Tuesday and Thursday were easy days. They had a seven-mile run in the morning on Wednesday and a track meet that afternoon. And Saturday, most of the time, they had an invitation to do it. One day, when Richard was in middle school track, after practice, he asked the coach how much he should run down when he went home that day. She was always thinking, and then once or twice in high school, he came down, I said, Richard, did you run this weekend? He said, I ran seventeen Saturday, coach, and nineteen Sunday. But the reason I had to run eleven before and after school, Monday and Friday, most of them didn't work like him, so they didn't do a lot. Two days a day, they were off, I mean, they were off Saturday and Sunday, so I had to run more than Friday, when most of them did nothing at all that weekend, so anyway. Richard was a better person than he was a runner. He graduated from Bradford with a degree in finance. He worked for the Federal Deposit and Traps Corporation in Seattle, where he was a supervisor examiner. When he was visiting Gilas County for Washington State in the springtime, he kind of lit me up. The last Saturday came, he and I, and the other guy, the yellow PC, the two guys together looked like they were six. They looked like lots of Gilas County track drivers. That's what we did. In two thousand nineteen, the age fifty-six, Richard passed away from cancer. The day before he passed, all sixty-one of his coworkers were in the jury. I hope now that you all know what a fine person Richard Noel was, and I hope you agree that he's truly should be a type. Thank you very much, if anybody have any questions?
Thanks, George.
Thank you.
Next up, uh, I get my chance to do, uh, the man's life impression.
Yes, sure.
Uh, just a quick summary show of the, uh, quarterback challenge. Uh, today, we've had two-hundred-and-seventy citizens participate, and we have picked up a thousand to bag, which we saw a lot of. So now, to give away a little money. Wake you up, wake you up, wake you?
Just wanted to give you the job.
You get, you're in the deciding. This is, it really is. It's the Cub Scout troop, seven forty-two. E.B. Ramsey. And James Kaiser. It's just a fantastic program.
Yeah, we appreciate that, appreciate y'all's support with that, and board supervisors as well, it's been wonderful.
Can we have one more one?
Yes, sir.
So next up, the book box. Sorry to keep you ladies waiting there.
We all start having some, we're gonna get our beer.
Um, technology club, do they control it, or does Mr. Gray control it?
What the? Did you have, did you leave the mouse down there?
I did, they would like to flip that on and off again.
Is it on?
It, it's my, uh, suggestion, just airly click on stuff, it will continue to work. Okay. Thank you, no, no. I was only checking when I said this. Yeah, love you. Hey Laura, I think you wore the mask.
So I did have a student tell me yesterday that when I got to the board, he never knew what I was telling you. And, um, so we're here to present on our book box. Um, I'm Angela Carlos, I'm a retired world reading specialist at Brick along, and we're coming on. Laura McGaw, and I teach in a garden at Brick along. And so we wanna talk to you guys about our book box. So I've always had a dream to drive a book mobile. Um, so when I was growing up, it was one that would come to her neighborhood, it was always such an exciting time. And so when I retire, I'm gonna do a book on it. Well, as we were in conversation, we're like, well, while they tell I retire, let's do it now. And so just in conversations that we had with people, we thought, well, how can we give books to students so that they will enjoy reading? Um, and so what we've done is we've made these slides, and the hope is that we can start small, and then it can develop into other things. And we would love to get that, um, community involved with us. And so a lot of these slides would be directed as, talking to some community partners, to see if they can give donations or support. Um, so on our next slide, this would be just a little bit about us, how we cover schools, our numbers of students, how many elementary schools we have, a middle school and a high school, but we only have two public libraries. And the libraries are not near a lot of our students, and students don't have transportation, and they really don't have a lot of access to free books throughout the summer. And so our other, um, these are just some demographics that we would share with people, is our student demographics, and then our students with disabilities, our English learners. And then this next one is the one that really jumps out as, is that the percentage of students in our community there economically disapparent. It's almost a fifty-fifty split. So of course, we wanna provide books to all students, but we would want to focus more on this population of students so that we encourage them to read through school year, but also through the summer. And this was a quote that I found that just was interesting to me, and it said, "Reading should not be presented to children as a chore or a duty, but as a gift." And so as teachers, lots of times, we're teaching kids to read, to learn, to learn information, to pass it as a well test, or two different things. But we want them to read just because they love to read, and it's a gift. And we're both very avid readers, and we love to talk about books, and we wanna share that love with our students.
And so when we started talking about possibly doing this over the summer, we donated, and we did a little research about students' access to books over the summer when they are not in school. And some of the things, I mean, obviously, you can read over the summer, um, but some of the things that jumped out at us were that children can receive and then read free books over the summer, experience the equivalent of attending three years of summer school. So that's a huge impact. Reading five books during the summer can potentially be powerful enough to, for them not to show a decline in their academics. Whereas through giving books to students, we can't force them to read, obviously, but we can give them access to books, and then we can also create an excitement about reading with, and the cost. Where people create excitement, as you can see, with all difficulty with our sponsorship. We will be able to drive a bus.
Boy, I'll wear that on my pants.
Or find somebody who can help us. I'm gonna say Laura, I'm stronger for this. So this was just, I thought this graphic was very impactful. It was from a study on the California aptitude test, and it just showed the students who are from those economically disadvantaged households, when they have access to books over the summer, how they can show growth, whereas if they didn't. And they show growth more than just the students who do have books at their home. And then, but those students who they do not have access to books, you can see there is a significant decline in their abilities over the summer. And what we wanna try to help to do is just to close that gap and keep them reading over the summer. And then this, um, and this is a program we did at Brick along, we did books and bikes class, and this was just a really neat program, because we went out into the neighborhood, we went to the lower-income areas where our students didn't have the access to books. We went a couple times a year, we gave, um, snacks, the bikes, and books to our students. And one thing that we found that was the coolest about this event was the relationships that it built with our students. So it wasn't just giving the books, here, have a snack, but the students got excited about seeing their teacher, seeing people from school, coming to their home. I had a little boy who, like, for weeks after words, would stop me in the hall and be like, hey, Miss Price, remember when you came to my house, do you remember? remember when you came to my house? Do you remember that? And so that's a big thing that we're looking at with this book bus. It's not just giving books to the kids, but building the relationships between our families in the community. So this is our, our dream or our mission for the, uh, for the book bus. That we will provide students with summer books while building relationships with students and families in the neatest part of our communities. So not just the books, but also they're building those relationships.
So what will it look like? This is definitely a work in progress. And so the goal is that we go to the five attendance zone areas for each school and maybe choose three different places in each neighborhood or in each area and give away three books. Um, and so we would talk to principals to see what neighborhoods or areas would benefit the most from the free books. Um, and we could go there. Then we would invite teachers, if they were brave enough to go with us or meet us there. And because it would be important for the kids to see familiar places, um, to go with us. And then we would also then, what we want to do is give one book and a snack. And when we talk with leadership, the idea of freeze pops was kind of a good idea of something that's summery and fun. So we do a book and a freeze pop. Um, and then what we want to do is just enjoy these books with students and families. And since we do love books, we could do like a read aloud with the kids. We could have book conversations or different opportunities. And we also talked about possibly having a sign up sheet to know who was attending and what books we gave. Um, and then we would advertise it through social media. So we would put, uh, this is where the book bus is coming, be ready for us, you know, these are the times. And that way, people in the community, you know, in this scenario, uh, people didn't come, then we can talk about there'd be another place that would be more appropriate. Um, and the goal would be to build relationships with outside members of the community. Um, so to talk with other businesses, would you be willing to donate to the book bus? Donate books or if you wanted to, um, because ideally, I would love to have a bus with bookshelves that they could go and read and, and different things, but that would be the ultimate dream. Um, and then the last thing is we just want kids to be excited about books. We want them to be excited that the teachers care about them through the summer. We want them to be able to build the community with each other. And we just want to keep on reading and learn to read. Because when you practice doing something that you enjoy, you get better at it. And we want our kids to be better readers. Um, and so this next slide, and April will tell you that it would be just kind of what the book bus advertisement would look like.
So kind of like what we would put out there on social media, that you could see here is where the book bus is coming this week. But if we would say at the River Lawn, for example, we would make several stops in the community. And then we would have a stop back at River Lawn. So even if the book bus doesn't come to your neighborhood, you can come to the school when it's down and everyone can participate. So everyone can take part. So this would be a week where we would do River Lawn, Snowboy, Caster. And then the next week, we would switch and we would do Glasskey Elementary. And Dublin, as well as we also talked about holding to summer school with an innocent session. So the students who are attending summer school can also participate. And so here are, we looked at some of our expenses. So what we looked at is we looked at especially health stuff books. And we had a projected cost of five thousand dollars to purchase books, which has been funded by our Title I department. So we've already been able to order those books. We ordered one thousand six hundred and two books on a variety of titles at interest levels. And we were able to also get a bunch of free books because we've ordered a bunch of books. And all good stuff there. Um, we've also received a grant from Virginia State Literacy Association for books as well. So we're just continuing to look for how we can continue to support the book.
And so we've been told there's an activity bus that might be available for us to drive. And the projected fuel cost might be around two hundred dollars for the summer. And then we have already purchased our freeze pops. Uh, and we're gonna get something purposeful to keep those cold. And then just put a table in the bus, set it up, and then put our books out and just store it for you. But do you guys have any questions?
Can we ride the bus too?
We're gonna have a sack full, so you can always get on the bus.
Troy, that kid is supposed to know, see, you're wired right.
Could we mention we can discuss the benefits of getting a CD?
It's a good helping to watch, whether they're encouraging me to get one or not. Something that I can't do it. It's about to have some friends that might do it with me.
Mary Shepherd is not allowed to drive.
Good driver.
Well, she'll have to be on the bus with us too.
Last year at the graduation, it was scary.
That was all part.
I think it's a wonderful idea.
Do a lot of fantastic content. I can't wait to see it action.
So come get on the bus.
Thank you.
People is all morning and excited. There's a bunch of analysis. Morgan's go over, calm down.
Cap it up, Laura, cap it up. One of it is me. Um, good evening, Mr. Care, members of the board, Mr. Grant. Um, an analysis of the current budget through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four is provided through your review. As of the end of March, sixteen point six seven percent of the budget period remaining. Uh, the first page provides the overview of the school operating budget using major expenditure functions. Uh, the next page provides an overview of the other funds controlled by the school board, which are cafeteria funds, textbook funds, and school capital fund. And then following that is a detailed analysis of personnel and non-personal expenditures for each department and sub-cause or related native functions. Um, on the revenue side, basic A payments have now increased based on our updated ABMs. And they are now ahead of budget for the year, as well as our state sales tax payments that are ahead of budget at this point in the year. Um, due means is all major expenditure areas are under budget for this point in the year. Um, and then the treasurer's office is currently aligned on our transfers. But once the cumulative revenue expenditures are taken into consideration and transfers are caught up, we'll have approximately twenty percent in county funds available for remainder of this year. And, um, the guns aren't approved budget yes, so that's a good news. Trying to make it lively.
Any questions, Thomas, Sarah? Thank you, Laura. Next up, uh, what's the work of the transportation report?
I would just like to mention before we get started. My people used to guard the mission, but I was excited about talking about our bus fleet with everybody until I saw the agenda and the order and we were expected to follow an excited kindergarten teacher. And I've been in this station a long time, and if they have a bulletin board or a press picture excited like you're not gonna match it. A little, little slight. We will talk about our, let's see. Talk about our bus fleet. We currently run forty-six regular bus routes. We have seven special needs routes, seven vans that run in district and out. And then we have one van that runs for our high school presence. In our bus fleet, we have eighty-two total buses. We have fifty-two route buses for regular and special needs. Most of the buses that we run every day. Sixteen spares, four spare special needs buses, three trip buses, and then seven buses that have been taken out of operation for various reasons, whether we use them for power or service. It's not safe. Of our trip buses, we have two branded two thousand twenty-four Thomas sixty-five buses. Those are only everyday buses you see in the mileage. And we still have the two thousand and four Thomas seventy-seven passenger buses, the flat buses that you see in the top of that. Our coaches enjoy that the bus stores underneath for more seating. Then we have three pages of our route buses. These are the ones that are zero to four years old. As you can see, we tip the years past here to a year or so of all five to six buses to keep up with our fleet. And those are the ones you see out everywhere. That is the Thomas C two. We've been purchasing these since about two thousand and fourteen, so about the last ten years. We deal with Sonny Merriman out of Lynchburg, had a great relationship with them. We call it and tell them what we want, you know, they're pretty worth it, so. Now our route buses that are five to ten years old, as you can see, we still have our Thomas or thirty-five passenger buses. Those are our special needs buses, okay? And then for the most part, we run sixty-five passenger buses. Now, there being sixty-five passenger and I'm sure most of you know that's around three kids to the situation. You can tell that that it's not feasible for the most part. So the majority of the time, there are going to be about forty-four kids on the bus. There was one year, I believe two thousand and one, where we ended up with a few seventy-seven passenger buses. Then it transitioned to our trip buses, just to make it easier with the shorter trip routes. We can double up teams, especially in the spring, this makes the business a little bit easier. The trouble with that is when you order a bus and you currently have lower hours, discussed in a minute, but we ordered it, I believe, in March and it's not scheduled to be delivered till August. And typically we get to call and say, what do you have now? Let me get the quickest because then there's a need. So there are fast drop way down to two thousand and fourteen. My concern with these is we're starting to see around the two thousand and fourteen to seventeen range, we're starting to see a lot of issues with the death systems, materials like the diesel exhaust fuel fluid. And we're keeping at least one or two down all the time. And Paul over at County Shop has to work his way through it. So we're having a big need for our spare bus. And it's worried because it's either, on what they call the catalytic burn in the car, pretty much is going up and just having a lot of trouble out of our death systems. Now these are the buses that are getting a little emotional because these are all two thousand and eleven older. Now the freightliner buses, these do not have a death system. These, if you check the fluid and you pre-trip, they're gonna run every single day. So, but, um, we have a few bluebirds, okay, and we get down to our freightliners. Now, this, y'all don't make fun of them. It's my baby. This is a two thousand and nine Lynchburg sixty-five passenger bus. And Angel, can you notice on the front, the paint is coming off? Now, this may not be the quickest anywhere, but if you, for some reason, every bluebird I've seen in this from two thousand and nine to two thousand and seven, the paint is starting to come off in front of these. It is a great bus and can't say that it hasn't happened. And then we get into our spares. Now these are our workhorses. These are the ones that you're gonna see on a daily basis. You might see ten of these out on the road, okay? So to make the appearance that our bus fleet is old, when in reality, we have anywhere from five to ten drivers out on a daily basis. And for the most part, we're such a rural community, the buses are part of the drivers' south. We have to call a subdriv, they're gonna come to the Austin thing of the spare exit codes we've been out some year. So we have a few two thousand and nine, these are our special needs buses, all the way down to three, two thousand and five freightliners, sixty-five passengers. And then our spare buses that are twenty years or older, I have a couple two thousand and fours, uh, two thousand and two freightliners, sixty-five. And we have one two thousand freightliner, sixty-five passenger. Now typically, you want to keep your fleet twenty years of their work. And I would agree with that up until, if you look at these buses, these are the buses that run every single day. All the friends are always a bus, two thousand freightliner sits in the middle school. That's our activity bus, Mr. Dalton drives and runs on route every single day. Whereas I'll have, in any given day, two or three of our Thomas buses are out and these are just running, so. But there is the picture of the freight lines that we still have. Now our other few transportation vehicles, we have eleven air vans we run from two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and twenty. We have two Sherwood Land Pallas, that's eleven to fourteen, one has a barrier car. And then we have one Crown Victoria, two thousand. These are used for our special needs transportation and also service vehicles. I keep a van and a couple cars at the county garage so it's time for a service, the bus driver crosses it off. And they're, they're giving a beautiful two thousand and four Crown Victoria. And as you see, the cars, they range from thirty-five thousand to one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Currently, we have on order, uh, a two thousand and twenty-four Kia Carnival, eight passenger minivan, and then a new two thousand and twenty-five Thomas sixty-five passenger bus. This replaced bus thirty-seven, I'm sure that were back in February, we had that accident out Sunday. This will replace that bus. And then our current budget lines, um, we're both at four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for fuel, which seems like a huge amount of money until you start running your fifty-some buses there. We typically, I've seen our fuel costs per day up to twenty-five hundred dollars per day, down to eighteen hundred. Last month, we ranged, it was a little over two thousand dollars a day to run our buses. And then vehicle length is two hundred and fifty thousand. It also seems like a large amount, but with the amount of trouble with some of our death systems and our turbos with the new ones. I mean, a new turbo for a bus is thirty-five hundred to four thousand dollars. So we had those issues. Um, our line is personal vehicles every year. We have a line for one bus, one hundred and forty-five thousand, and one banner car, forty thousand. Now these are typically hailed, fuel costs have varied the last couple of years so much. These are typically held to the end of the year to actually be prepared with fuel first mission to get these two store. Last year, we had to cut into our bus line because fuel was astronomical. There was one month where we had to pay sixty thousand dollars for fuel. So we had to use our bus line. But, um, this year we're doing much better. That's why we're ready to purchase that van and then, um, the buses. That's what I have. I'm sure you have questions, so I'll answer the best I can and then I'll find them.
Yeah, I have a question. We, uh, looking capital needs and stuff, that's some of the things we're gonna be working through as well. We noticed again, eighty-two total buses. So you said the normalized spending before is pretty much appreciated out, or it's, uh, uh, in twenty years.
Yes, sir.
So in your opinion, we're four per year on a rotating schedule. Is that something that is, we're trying to get something consistent, we can't just say this is what we need? Or is that, because some of the loans are a lot over the twenty years that you said are, some of them will prefer a bus.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
And when I look at, in my mind, you have about five every year. And that's going to keep your route buses within twenty years old. That lights bus will be about twenty years old at the time of the place. Now, obviously, you have some buses that aren't gonna make it to twenty years. Like, you know, bus six, we were talking about, I'll put that free picture up there. Um, it actually sat for well over a year because those woodbirds are notorious for having electrical issues in computers. So that bus sat for two years, we weren't using it. I talked to Paul, and at one point, a computer for that bus cost more than it would be to this. It wasn't worth fixing. And he found a place, I'm not sure where the supplier was, where he could get a blank computer, we could ship it off and have it flown. And it was most cheaply, so we tried it. And now that bus runs every single day. So I would say we could get five every year that would keep it within twenty. Um, four year would be astronomical, I, I would think, y'all, every time I saw him. But it was great. But, um, some of the issues you're gonna find with that, and the four would help. Like my five is just a, a bear needs. But if you look at some of your route buses, like a two thousand and twenty bus, some of ours only have twenty-five thousand, while others have one hundred and eighteen thousand. But we have one special needs bus that goes to Lythfield, it's a mini every single day. While that bus is only four years old. Bus is only four years old, it's getting a huge amount of miles when it's running back into Lythfield. And the full count, yes, man, that's the last time I drove, I felt like I was one of these. If you go across the county and pick up students, that's about a three hour bus trips and a bus on the road, six hours a day. So obviously, you know, that was not going to make it to twenty years. We know that at the, um, if I could keep our rap, um, our fleet within twenty years, I would feel much better about it. Obviously, like, one of these buses, one of our freightliners, like that is our transportation supervisor, that is the generalist. Okay, and she has informed me that I'm not allowed to trade through that bus. Yeah, but I would also send that bus to California, I wouldn't worry about it. System barrier by the bus.
Is that, how many, it's a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars for a two thousand, uh, two thousand and twenty-five Thomas, is that a?
Yes, so that is the last one we just ordered. And that is something else that worries me because the year before, we ordered five of those funds and we're having to buy all the death of funds. And we paid a hundred and seventeen for those two thousand and twenty-four ones. So this two thousand and twenty-five has already went from a hundred and seventy thousand to a hundred and thirty-three. So I'm assuming we're gonna purchase buses again. And I haven't even quoted the special needs bus. It's typically just around about ten thousand more than a sixty-five.
Everybody, whoever has your funds, we get some of the discount.
It's all state contract.
Yeah, we just do the contract.
We could, I could look into it, I would, I'm not very, I'm not that old. So we only have new buses, we don't really.
Yes, ma'am.
We're about to, yes. With the same contract, we haven't spaced out, so we can call the bus, they have specifications we asked for.
We're looking at buying two this month.
My next name would play in, in July, I have the capital, I purchased two buses. Because our last two, the two we need to replace, in my opinion, would be the one, two thousand and six freightliner, and one of these bluebirds, it's about two hundred and sixty-nine thousand miles, this is getting to where it's still runs, but you're getting little things like water pumps as well. The two thousand and six, only reason we're still running it, the old freightliner is, well, a couple of buses that aren't operational, we had a newer bluebird, and as Paul played, developed rooms, where he is, you know, a mechanic for thirty-five years, had fixed everything he had to fix on it, and he'd run it for three days, and it just wouldn't run twenty miles an hour, so you can't have it on the road, and so, you know, make a third of your experience, take it easy, so. Any other questions?
Thank, thank you, Roger, for the call. Yeah, I'm terrified, I don't keep the internet too slow.
All right, you're telling me.
Okay, there. All right, very good, I wanted to fill you all in on how the last academic year at the School Based Health Center is going to go. It's been a successful year, um, we are going to continue appointments during the summer on a very regulated schedule, so that we keep these students, um, with, with the care. And we are also going to be doing the E O T physical school cluster. All right, as a reminder, School Based Health Center is located at the high school, we serve all students, staff, and faculty of P C P S. We offer services such as well childhood exams, school physicals, sports physicals, sit visits, uh, the flu, strep, sinus infections, entries, and chronic disease management, and significant for adult patients, for Alzheimer's, hypertension, uh, immunizations, and lab work for established patients. From August of two thousand and twenty-three to May sixth, we've had three hundred and thirty-five medical visits, we've served one hundred and eighty-one unique patients. Most of our patients, their insurance wasn't medicated at sixty-six percent, while twenty percent have private insurance, such as the New Hospital Shield, and then there were fourteen percent who didn't have any insurance at all. And now those are people that were able to help through like our side and scale discount fee, or two hundred and fifty of the federal pocket level. The majority of our appointments were for sit visits, um, flu season was especially busy this year, lots of little students. And second was well childhood scenes, so this is where your student receives a physical, immunizations, if needed, that was really critical, efficient. And those were a significant portion of our appointments this year as well. This side has changed a lot since, uh, the beginning of the year, since last year. This year, eighty-six percent of appointments on the medical side were students, and fourteen percent were staff and faculty. Um, last year, we were at about fifty, but, and what this does is this is showing, um, students are really utilizing the services a lot more now, it's, it's coming, it's coming more now. So I'm going to tell a little bit about what we're doing here, so early in the school year, uh, we received a call from the school nurse, which we, we pay them every single day, that a new family had just enrolled in the school, they didn't have medical or mental care. Uh, they were from out of state, and unfortunately, the kids couldn't start school, because they didn't have the required immunizations. So I went down to the office, introduced myself, uh, told them about the School Based Health Center. It was a mother and six children, uh, aged in age from five to seventeen. I was able to walk them off through, enrolling the children in the program, so we got them signed up right there in the, in the main office. After speaking with the mom more, um, she explained that they've had kind of a rough time, the kids hadn't had medical care, care in a very long time, and they have had little to no mental care throughout. We were able to bring all of her kids in for well childhood visits, all six of them, where they had an established care with a medical provider, we were able to give them their immunizations, so they were able to start school, within, I think it was maybe a week, we got them all in, we got them all in the nurse. Um, during these appointments, we were also able to bring in our dental hygienists to do a visual assessment of their mouths. Uh, the children's were, the children were then scheduled to have their dental exams and cleanings done without the mom having to leave work. And some of the kids need a follow-up for medical appointments, and dental issues found during the appointments. However, P C P S was able to assist with transporting the students from their home school to the high school for the appointments. So these appointments were scheduled with the mother, and I would contact mom after each appointment, let her know how it went. And because we have offices throughout the neighborhood, and valley, the community health center does, the seventeen-year-old, after graduation, here, let us begin, will be able to continue receiving care, continuity of care will be in place. So now these kids are going to be ready to have a medical future. Now, our dental services are provided on a rotating basis to each school in the county. The appointment includes an examination by a dentist, and cleans by the hygienist. Will apply fluoride and sealants if needed, and if the student is going to have a cavity or another issue, then they'll be referred to any of our three other locations, to their dentist, or to a specialist if needed, for example, in work with doctors, or a, um, oral surgeon. So the last school year, our dental team completed two hundred and ninety-seven appointments, and saw two hundred and eighteen patients. In dental, the medical number is a little higher, um, we are at almost thirty-fourths of our dental patients have medicated. This is important because we are one of the only, um, people here, you know, uh, dentist in the neighborhood, except Medicaid, and except pediatric patients. So we're really able to give these kids, and sometimes we see that, that number really. So referrals for our dental side, the slightest signature, this, out of the two hundred and ninety-seventh institutions that we saw, more than half of them, fifty-six percent, have received referrals for restorative services. Now those referrals may have gone to one of our locations, it may be to their dentist for restorative services, um, or again, another specialist. Um, these issues have been for everything from cavities, you've had full mouth extractions, we've had referrals for partials, and even, um, dentures, and these are for first years. Our goal is to bring our high quality patient-centered medical and dental services to Class D County. And, you know, with the, with the help of the board, and the staff, and faculty, and Dr. Graham, with our Mr. Graham, we are able to do that. Have a few more little updates I want to give you. In two thousand and twenty-three, for school year, the School Based Health Center applied twenty-one sealants. Um, dental sealants are, they're applied on their back teeth, your back teeth have little bruises, whenever, those teeth are of course used for chewing or food, and whenever the food gets in there, sometimes it gets stuck in those little grooves, bacteria can form, and that's what's going to cause cavities in your teeth. However, the sealants, they go in, they cover, and it protects, it gets cavities, and they can protect for up to four years after it's placed. And it's actually a, a nationally standardized measure to place these sealants, so it's a very important preventative service that we're able to do. We have more treatment plan, it gets, uh, to give these sealants, but S O L testing, it's kind of thrown the schedule a little bit, so we're getting rescheduled. Restored dental appointments, I told you about the fifty-six percent of students who need these services. Um, we have decided to block days at our mains, our main clinical professional quarter, we're going to block two days a month, because we have so many students that need services, and they need it quickly, because, because they're in pain, because it's, it's a bad situation sometimes. So we're blocking two days a month specifically for Class D County public schools, so that we can get them in, and they're not going to have, have a wait. We began, uh, transportation services with the help of Troy and Mr. Graham back in September, late September of last year. And to, um, up until May, May sixth, we transported thirty-four medical patients and twenty-two dental patients from their home school to Class D County High School for, uh, medical services, if they have, um, an emergency dental issue. We're able to bring them in, and get them seen, it's, it's really been, uh, it's been very difficult, Troy, and then just, um, it's been a very easy, easy work to do, so. This year, we were also able to work with the Health and Medical Sciences in early childhood education class, to get their P P D placements before the clinicals. Um, it was really nice working with these kids, because they're interested in all the medical sciences, because they're interested in what we're doing, so it's kind of a teaching moment while we're doing this. And we really look forward to doing this again next year. Community events, um, you know, being at the School Based Health Center, it really allows us opportunities for outreach within the school community and the local community. We've been, uh, at school open houses, sporting events, the opportunities fair, this is our second year there, and we've been tours to the health-related classes, and showed them all of our, our technology, and how we use it. And the community, we've attended, uh, the Cedar Lake Festival, River Tunnel Games, Classic Pride, Spring Family Fun Festivals, and presented the School Based Health Center information to the last two newcomers at two separate events. And coming up in July, um, we'll be presenting at the National Healthcare, National School Based Healthcare Conference in B C, about how we work together with Class D County Public Schools, and we'll be celebrating there. Thank you very much for your time, if you guys have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I, I have some questions, um, back in August, twenty twenty-two, that's when all this kind of got started, and it started again. At that meeting, Dr. Kell's director, Dr. David Roberts, was there.
Yes.
And, and there was questions about what kind of medical treatment would be administered. And one of the things that was discussed, uh, the doctor with Roberts was that there will be certain procedures that will be allowed by law to be done tonight. You know, that was one of the things that he wrote, and said that he has to do it, and that rolled around the memorandum of understanding. The memorandum was supposed to do that, even their law says you can administer birth control, and, um, sexual transmitted diseases, all these treatments without the parents knowing. There was going to be a memorandum of understanding saying, this clinic wouldn't do that, you wouldn't do it. So I've been through the memorandum, and I can't find anything that means that it says that we won't, we won't do these listed things, that, that, without parent notification. Um, that's the biggest concern with it, is, was it being on, on campus, if, if someone will need for something, and the, and the parents weren't notified, which unfortunately, the law allows, and my, my wife has had to ask permission for my younger daughter when she was young, can I, can she go back with you, the mom? So the same thing here, if, if a parent finds out that their child is getting birth control or treated for M S D, or pregnancy, or anything like that, or prescribed meds in some cases, that, that's not a good thing, you know, that's not a good thing. And in fact, in our, in our school policies, there's a policy K G R, that already has a written statement of, of how a community uses school facilities. And one of the things it talks about is that, um, a permission will not be given for profit-making activities conducted for any business. So even though if you're, uh, the, the sense of this whole policy is that we can't just open up a Starbucks, or McDonald's, or anything like that, even though this is health related, this is a school, and we can't do, cut to that business like that.
So I think, we got two separate things going on.
Okay.
Um, the first part, um, about the things that were discussed back when we first opened, um, you're correct, by state law, these kids can go anywhere, they can, they can walk into Dr. Stinkle's office and get treatment for any of those things without parent consent. However, how many times have we done this in the School Based Health Center, because we told you we wouldn't ask? Zero. Have we been asked? A couple of times, but we get my book. So, there's that information. Um, I do remember, I feel like you brought this up before.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's, you know, kind of, I think, in your hands, this part is, you know, with property, and that's, I'm not familiar enough with it to speak about it.
Yeah. I mean, and there's the case of liability too, I mean, if something's happening, they claim it, um, and you guys won't, sue. Go ask the county about this, because it will be named as one, they, they, that was part of it too, there's the liability side of it, there's non-父权的 notification, that could happen, and then there's the policy that stated this should have never happened. Policy, it's already on the books, it's been on the books since two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, I appreciate your fear for what could possibly happen.
Yeah.
Um, however, it's not happening at our moment. And if you would feel more comfortable during the next renewal of the O U, to insert that in there, um, you know, that would be something definitely I'd sooner move to talk about, you know, but they have to follow state laws too, just like every other position in the state.
And this is not an event, Mr. Clint, I mean, you guys have a business down there on Riverbush Road, you have one of the jobs, and I think you mentioned Christiansburg. Everything that you can offer, uh, parents and students in, in the public is offering there, I was saying, we don't, I think it should, I think it should be in the, in the school.
Right, and I, I appreciate your opinion, but you will be cutting out a lot of students that don't receive care because of transportation issues? And those students wouldn't have medical and dental care, and that would be very unfortunate in my opinion.
I mean, there was the, the bus, the dental buses to come around and take care of that.
Yeah, they did, that's where, yeah, Virginia, we pretty smile something about that. So the, the, the issue is, whenever they come, they clean their teeth. That's it, do you have the cavity? There's nothing, nowhere to go, and referral. And for the fifty-six percent of students that we found just that we've taken care of, who need those services because they're in pain, because they need full mouth extractions, it's a big deal.
I can.
You're welcome. Yep.
You mentioned that you had referred fifty-six percent for restorative services, and that you are delegating two days a month at your business clinic in Christiansburg. So, if the issue is transportation for all of these children, that's the point basis for this clinic, how are those kids getting to Christiansburg on a two-day schedule over the summer?
That's a fantastic question. We would prefer those days to be at our Dublin Center, however, the dentist's in Christiansburg. And I'll tell you that today, they pay for an Uber, for an Uber to pick up a student's parent from their house, come to the school and pick them up, and they drive them to their dentist's, or whatever they're paying. So we're working to figure out how to do this. Are there community, there, I know there's no community out of transportation, we're trying to get families to get a little bit, just to, we're trying to figure that out. But having these up is the first step, because that's open availability, which is really hard for people.
You're not looking to the schools for that transportation, you know, in the summer?
No. I don't think so.
One question.
Yes, sir.
Of the, you said you saw three hundred and thirty-five total visits, hundred and eighty-one we need visits, eighty-six percent of those are students?
Yes.
Can you give me the grade, you know, of high school students, middle school, elementary?
I can give two one another day, but I don't have it on me. I mean, we see a lot of those.
Can you give me a ballpark?
I.
I mean, you're at the high school, I mean, high school students.
Yeah, at the high school, we probably see a little more high school students, but we see, we see a good amount of elementary kids, we do.
When the high school students come, do parents often accompany them?
Um, some of them, every once in a while, most of them, the high schoolers, they don't, they just wanna call afterwards. So, and it's, same with the elementary kids as well, the parents usually come to you the first appointment, to kind of introduce the child, help them feel comfortable, you know, this is a doctor, this is what you're here for, this is what we're gonna do, and then the child comes by themselves after that, and they're fine. You're welcome.
Any other questions?
I just have one comment, too.
Yes, sir.
I just wanna say, you know, in watching this, they, they're not just an organization that has come, they've embedded themselves in our school division, they're coming here and their, and their colleagues, we take them in our parades, and then our homecoming parades, they come to our basketball games, they, you know, they really made a point to become part of our family, and, and I was even in there last week with a medical issue too, so it was nice to, I couldn't get an eye doctor to point this off, and attention to, to ask them for some support too, it was great to have that too, so appreciate all the work you're doing.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
Thank you. Next up, Mr. Graham, please respond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the student aid report, very proud of this. In April, we had only a hundred and sixty-three incidents throughout our school division, which is fantastic, and a hundred and seventy-one offenders. If you look at that, the grade level that had the most was our sixth grade, twenty-five incidents, and when you look at three hundred and some kids in, you know, each of our grades, I think that's, that's wonderful. So we are doing a much better job with behaviors. And at the end of the year too, when everybody's a little bit spoilt, and I think these numbers are, are really good to, to celebrate. Same thing with attendance, and Ms. Combs does a wonderful job providing today for us too. This data is raw data, so this is actually the worst that it can be right now. And remember, we have children that are home-based, homebound, and then the flexible tutoring initiative too, those haven't been factored into the, the data here, so, you know, that's gonna increase scores, but you can see as a division, we're right at ninety-four percent in our chronically absent, absent students there, you can see those too, again, that's raw data as well. So we hope that that will factor in, our administrators are doing an outstanding job in that, we have quite a bit of tutoring going on too. So not only is it helping academically, it's helping with our attendance as well too, so very excited about those two reports for you.
Any questions, comments?
I would ask what you think is contributing to the reduced number of behavioral issues? You've mentioned that this is much improved, I'm curious if there's a, can we point a finger to what?
I think a lot of it is based upon the autonomy we've given to our, to our staff, and the fact that, you know, we are, we're, we are the ones who are, need to be in charge, and, you know, the adults need to be in charge, and, you know, when a child, just like this evening, what we have to do, approve that too, I forgot to tell you all that, so we do have to, but, you know, I think that we're setting a, a model that, you know, we're here to learn and not here to misbehave, and we're seeing that in our data with behaviors, and we're seeing it also in academics. We had a wonderful start to our SOL season with our elementary schools with English, and still I see that climb as well too, so very excited about that. So that would be, I think, autonomy, but the priority of discipline too.
Thanks to our, to our administrators and our administration staff, and that's a wonderful job. Next up, Calum Robinson.
So senior walk, Ms. Ball, what time does that start?
The walkthroughs tomorrow?
Yes.
At twelve.
Twelve.
We practice, then a cookout, and then elementary walkthroughs.
What, which school does it start with?
We disperse all at one time.
Oh, you all are up with the count, you're up to have it. You like the count, then we have the SBA training, I think, are you doing that, Scott, are you doing? Okay, thank you for that. Graduation at eight, look forward to having everybody that have a backup plan that we worked on, Becky, with, if it does rain, we are going to be in the gym, so we can actually sit more people in the gym than we can in the dental center, which is great, I mean, that works out really well, thanks to Jess and his staff, or, or Iron, and to Ms. Ball and her staff too. Friday, May twenty-fourth, Dublin's having a kindergarten blowout celebration, we're alongside the fifth grade promotion, we're alongside also having a kindergarten promotion, different times. We're out of school on Memorial Day on May twenty-seventh. On May twenty-eighth, Chrysler's having their fifth grade promotion, Classy Elementary's having their kindergarten promotion, and Chrysler's also having a kindergarten promotion too. On Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, the middle schools having their eighth grade ceremony, Snowville there at the end of year, off-school assembly, and then on May thirtieth, the fifth grade graduations and promotions are going on at most of our elementary school. Of course, Friday, May thirty-fourth is the last day of school, and then Tuesday, June eleventh is our next school, we're going to be, so we have a lot going on the next few weeks of school, so I'm looking forward to all our exciting events. Any questions?
Any questions, comments?
I have one question. If we have to move into the gymnasium, I ask this probably as a parent.
Okay.
Do I still give my twenty tickets?
Not twenty.
I don't know twenty, because I'm lying here.
Eight, eight.
Eight's okay, okay.
At least it's average.
Yes. That will be a last minute decision since we are close by.
Okay.
All right, let me just do actuarial first on the agenda is the revised proposed budget for the October twenty-fourth school year that was discussed at the last budget workshop. Any questions, comments, concerns about the revised proposed budget for twenty-fourth?
Just so the community knows too, Mr. Chair, that we, what we discussed in our session was to lower some enrollments, and we had some leeway there in case we're not expecting enrollments, in fact, we're expecting enrollment to increase, and that's one of the reasons that we did that, we just wanted to have some security there. And the adjustments that we made were insurance and VRS, and then to increase from four percent to five percent our rates. And again, we're only expecting a slight increase in insurance for our staff. And like Ms. Carr said today, we did get the budget, and right now the current numbers look like we're gonna have more money this year than we were anticipating, we talked about that a little bit.
They're proving to have a budget problem.
Yes, that's true. That's true.
Hey, more busting tools. Any other questions, comments? You're not gonna get the motion to approve the revised, revised budget for twenty-fourth?
I made the motion to approve the revised support budget for this year.
Second?
No seconds.
Mrs. Porter?
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Williams? Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Cox? Yes. Mr. Price?
Yes.
Next up is the revised administrator salary scale.
We kind of covered that too in our work sessions, well, that's, as we said, more aligned with what our school divisions are going, what kind of our area, region six, region seven, too.
Very competitive scale compared to, you said, to. Any questions, comments, concerns? You're not gonna get a motion to approve the revised administrator salary scales?
I'm gonna get a motion.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Porter?
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Cox? Yes. Mr. Price?
Yes.
Next up is the service learning CBI field trip on bottom four.
That's just an addition for us, so we can be able to get a key to operate.
Any questions, comments? You're done, can I make a motion to approve the service learning field trip on bottom four?
I made the motion to approve the service learning field trip.
Second?
No second.
Mrs. Porter?
Mr. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Cox? Yes. Mr. Price?
Yes.
I'm prepared to make an actuarial for the evening.
Yes, I probably need to, probably need to amend the agenda to do that for the action item of the student here.
So we just need to make a motion to, uh, amend the agenda. Do I have a motion to add the student misspelled to be a current agenda?
I make that motion.
Second?
No second.
Mrs. Porter?
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Cox? Yes. Mr. Price?
Yes.
And I would like to recommend to the board that student number eight-six-zero-two-six-eight-eight be expelled for three hundred and sixty-five days, and can request for readmission on May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Questions, comments? You're done, do we, do I have a motion to expel student eight-six-zero, sorry, I was paying attention. Student eight, off student eight.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Porter?
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Cox? Yes. Mr. Price?
Yes.
Thank you all, and I'd like to recommend to the school board that student number eight-six-zero-two-four-one-zero be suspended, I mean expelled for three hundred and sixty-five days, and will be eligible to request for readmission back into Class County on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Questions, comments? Can I get a motion to approve that?
Let's go make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Mrs. Porter?
Mrs. Payne?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Ms. Cox? Yes. Mr. Price?
Yes.
That brings us to future agenda items. If you have any future agenda that you'd like to discuss?
I'd like to put a future agenda, I'd like to put the memorandum of understanding between the best kindergarten schools and CBI, as a future action item for this case.
Add that to the next month's agenda?
Yes, sir.
And the only other thing I was gonna discuss, this, nineteen seventy-four was the last graduating class of Dublin High School, Class County High School. So, right now, fifty years ago, the last class has graduated. Does that, that makes this the fiftieth year, this fall, so twenty twenty-five would be the first graduating class, or nineteen seventy-five would be the first graduating class of Class County High School, right? Our anniversary, does that sound right? I'm trying to think of that. Anyway, certainly that points to our fiftieth year of beginning of existence, we now.
I think Ms. Ball would have a lot planned.
Do you?
Yeah.
Good.
I thought I already did.
Yeah.
Because I can't believe that this fall would have been the first football season, right? This kind of fall, wow, twenty-four, but we can celebrate fifty years in twenty-four or something, in that decade of coffee.
It was the fiftieth season. So we've got tally marks all over some dry erase boards, I promise, it was the fiftieth season, and this is the fiftieth commencement ceremony that next year marks the fiftieth anniversary. I, it is very complicated, I understand, but this is the fiftieth commencement ceremony this Friday night.
If I didn't have a sister who was in the last graduating classes, I wouldn't have been able to do this.
I would like to add as an action item for next month, the retirement of the jersey for the journal, is that possible?
And then on top of that, you know, looking, going to other school districts, you go to their gymnasium, you see all the retired banners, all the, they're great accomplishments, and we do not have that all hid away, so we're gonna start retiring jerseys, I wanna, you know, make it known that we have had some, some accomplishments as well, in every area of sports, academics, and, so we can display those around our schools as well.
That sounds good, thank you.
And Mr. Wright does have, which we know of, Jersey, and passed away.
Sure. Do you all want that as an action item or information on?
Uh, an action.
An action item, second. Anything else?
I think so. Next up, the recognition of the citizens. Persons may present ideas or concerns regarding Class County Public Schools. The school board at this meeting will take no action items presented by citizens, may refer to this super candidate for research, or may report back to the school at subsequent meeting or through other communication. If you wish to comment about individual poise or performance, please present your comments versus the super candidate, such matters will not be discussed at this opening meeting. Please leave your comments in three minutes. The public conference will last longer than three minutes. Does man, please state name and your district.
Hi, my name's, my name is Susan Peters, I've been living in very good for the last couple of years, and so this is my first few times of interaction with the school district here, and I've been really thrilled with the dedication and devotion that I've seen in everybody, so I really appreciate that, and I love the book class idea, I think that's so, so. And let me, if I could have, well, um, these are just some of the wonderful things that help us advance our kids, and one of the things that I've recently become aware of is that the federal government requires every school that accepts federal funds to teach the Constitution during Constitution Week, and we may be part of the ten percent of schools around the country who do, and that would be really great. If, if not, and or if you would like to take a look at another opportunity of an accepted program to teach the Constitution that week, I've got some information here that would be available for you to look at and discuss at a future time, but I wanted to make it available, and I don't know if this is the right time, place to do that.
It, it would be wonderful for you to contact Dr. Graham, Dr. Pulcher, me, set the meeting with us, that'd be wonderful.
Thank you. Any, uh, assistance?
Josh, can I say one thing before we close this?
Yes, please.
Okay. I just wanted to acknowledge, if anybody's looking at our personnel sheet or is aware our HR department's movement sheet, okay?
Thank you, Grace.
But I wanna welcome all everybody to new positions, new positions of leadership, the movement around, we have a lot of faith in you all to really bring this school division where we have, so, so thanking for taking the position.
And to piggyback on that, you know, we're coming up on the end of our school year, we'll, we'll be out of session in our next school meeting, so I just wanna say thank you all, our students, our wonderful staff, and our parents, and our administrators, who are making twenty-four, three, twenty-four a fantastic year, and we're gonna have a great start to twenty-four, twenty-five with, with, you know, all of us.
And I would like to add to that, we appreciate the welcoming spirit in which you have brought us in, and communicated with us, and kind of wrapped our arms around us, we're very appreciative of that. If we haven't expressed that, we are doing that now. We love being with you, we love being with your students, we love being in your classrooms and your schools, and if you can't tell, we do, we've been there, it's a real pleasure actually to do that, so thank you for welcoming us and accepting us, if it's not gone unnoticed, it's very much appreciated, thank you.
Everybody back at you, we appreciate all the help and support, too, thank you.